All right. Okay, Jane. Jane, President of Elk Grove Chinese Association. Please give her a big hand. Jane, we'll have... Jose Perez, you here? He's on his way, I know he's on his way. Waldo Herrera? All right. Waldo is from Elk Grove Chamber of Peck. All right. Then we have Ron? Ronald Hernandez? Jimenez. Whoa, I can tell it's Alan that is doing this, right? He's the President of the United Latinos. Big hands for... Okay. Last but not least, we are gonna be introducing our moderator after I introduce these important people. Okay, Paula Maito? Paula, stand up. Yeah, there you go. Give her a big hand of applause. Elk Grove sixteen of the year, 2009. Wonderful, wonderful. Angela Spees, smart boy candidate? Okay. Whoa, we have Mayor Steve Lee. Where is he? I saw him. Stand up. All right. Thank you for joining us. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Frank? Frank Maito? Planning Commissioner, where are you? Frank? All right. Give her a big hand of applause. I'd like to introduce some of our board, Tofa Board members and ambassadors that are here tonight. Please stand up. Victoria? Luis? Everybody, stand up. All right. Thank you so much for coming. All right. Our infamous moderator, Paula Lee, League of Women Voters.
Thank you. There you go, girl. Okay. You can find our positions, we have seven positions on the statewide ballot measures that are currently on the November ballot, and you can find those on our website. Also part of the commercial. We really invite you to join us. You can find us online or pick up a brochure outside here. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will make a two-minute opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to written questions. And all the questions come to us in writing on those cards that we hope you've received. If you need a card to write a question, just raise your hand. If you need a pencil, raise your hand. If you have another question, raise your hand. If you want to turn in a card, raise your hand. And our League volunteers will pick up those cards. Write as clearly as possible. And there's no need to sign the question. It's all anonymous. But stick to the issues. And all candidates have the opportunity to answer the questions at our forum. We will not be directing any questions to individual candidates. Now, if you'd like to applaud, as many audiences do, we would ask you to wait until all these candidates, four of them, have made their opening statements and then applaud them all at one time. Can you do that? Campaign materials are outside of this room. This conforms to all of our policies for a fair and unbiased forum. Then each candidate will have a minute to two minutes to respond to each question. Finally, the candidates will make a one-minute closing statement. The timer, Claudia, is right in front of you candidates. Note her, she has that thirty-second sign that gives you a thirty-second warning and the stop sign. To avoid any embarrassing moment, we ask that you turn off your cell phones. That includes any candidates with your cell phones. We hope you can not use your cell phones. We appreciate that. And so, now, I would like to welcome the candidates. And thank you all for running for office, first of all. It's a great public service. And we'll be rotating who answers first. So we're gonna go first in this order. So we'll be beginning with Stephanie, and then next Orlando, you will answer. Okay. I'm not introducing you. You're introducing yourselves with your opening remarks. Okay. So, thanks for participating, and we'll begin with opening remarks from Stephanie Nguyen.
Ladies first, gentlemen. So thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you, League of Women Voters and all of the organizations for hosting this for us to give us an opportunity to speak to all of you here today. My name is Stephanie Nguyen. I came to the City Council and was appointed just a little bit, almost two years ago, February 2nd, 2017. And that changed my life completely, but I want to take you back a little bit. A little bit back to when my parents came here from Vietnam during the Fall of Sighon. They gave me and my family an opportunity, an opportunity here to be able to have the American dream. I now run a nonprofit organization that caters to low-income families with barriers, reentry population, folks that are not working right now. And one of the reasons that I feel the decisions that are made up at the Council on the Dais really truly affects the work that I do. As somebody that runs an organization and propositions that are made, I know what it's like when a decision is made and how it affects the organization that I serve. And so being on this council has not only opened up my eyes, but in the last two years, what I've learned, what I've learned is that decisions that are made and worked collaboratively and with the community are what we need here in our city. And I've done that for the last ten years in running the organization that I am in right now. My endorsements and my support are not just from here in the city of Elk Grove, but all across the Sacramento region. And I hope that after today and hearing what I have to say, that I will have the support of all of you as well too. And I'm gonna remind you to hold your applause. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Orlando Fuentes, and I've been in Elk Grove for twenty-seven years. I moved here for its tranquility, its good schools, and its safe environment and affordable homes. Today, I'm a parent and a grandparent as well. I've seen this town evolve and grow in many positive ways for families. We have award-winning parks and schools, perfect for raising a family. And one of the things I'm really proud of is that how culturally diverse our community has become. As I mentioned, or I will mention, I'm now Director of the Consumas Community Services District Board. That's an agency, that's an eighty-nine million dollar agency. We have five directors. We are your fire services and your parks and recreation services. Fire for Elk Grove and all, and parks and recreation for the city of Elk Grove. We are now, we, Elk Grove is now the second-largest city in Sacramento County. We were at seventy-two thousand people, residents, in 2000 when we were incorporated, and we're now probably approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. That's a growth of one-hundred-thousand people in the last eighteen years. This has brought about new challenges, and I think some of you are very familiar with those challenges. For example, traffic and issues around traffic and especially along Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard, access up and down Interstate Five and Highway Ninety-Nine to and from the jobs that most people go to in the downtown region. We have a jobs and home imbalance in Elk Grove. Housing has become unaffordable for moderate and low-income people. That has led to an increase in homelessness in Elk Grove. And you probably have all seen homeless people wandering our streets. We need to provide services for them. We need to prevent homelessness, and there are many strategies for trying to do that. We've always had a safe community, but we want to make sure our police officers have the equipment and the training they need in order to continue doing the good work. I promise to bring you my decades of experience in problem-solving at the statewide level on some of the toughest statewide issues, my experience as a CSD Director, and my community-based experience as a member of the city's multicultural committee for the last seven years that primarily brings you... Oh, I'm sorry. Brings you the multicultural festival. Thank you.
You will have, you will have many opportunities to finish that, those comments.
No applause, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, reminder, watch Claudia there. It's a small star sign, but it's still one there. Okay. And candidates for District Four, I mean Two, Pat Hume.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pat Hume, and I'm running for one final term on the City Council. I'm running for a couple of reasons. First, service to the community runs in my family. It's in my DNA. My grandfather spent two decades on the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Directors. My other grandpa was City Manager of Chico for twenty years, and my father, before his untimely passing, was a career officer and pilot in the United States Air Force. At the end of this next term, combined with my time as a Planning Commissioner, it would be twenty-two years of service to the city of Elk Grove. That's how I was raised, and that's why I've dedicated myself in service to the community through service clubs, through acting as a benefit auctioneer on the Elk Grove Community Foundation, the founder of Spotlight Elk Grove and Bounty on the Boulevard, the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation, the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council. Even though Elk Grove had one less zero on the population sign when I was growing up here, I still believe, and we've grown to be the second-largest city in the region, as was mentioned, I still believe that at our core, we have a small-town feel that is attractive to people and that people enjoy. That's why I work hard to protect that sense of community, but I also envision the city that we can be and where we can go from here. And that's one of the other reasons why I'm running, is we have three great civic-community projects under construction right now. Our Aquatic Center, our Community/Senior/Veterans Hall, and our Animal Shelter. And I would be honored to see those projects through to fruition and in my service to the city with a punctuation of a sense of accomplishment. Finally, I believe Elk Grove is better than divisive politics. I think that we don't need more politics. We need to find ways that we can come together, rather than dig in on issues that divide us. I am supporting and have support from both sides of the aisle, locally and regionally. I have earned the endorsements of my colleagues on the City Council, as well as the Elk Grove and Regional Chambers of Commerce, Sacramento Sierra Building Trades Council, and many of its local affiliates, the Consumas Firefighters, and our own Elk Grove Police Officers Association. Most importantly though, I want to earn your vote. I will always listen, that's why my phone number's on the mailer in the back room, and my website is mynamepathume.com, and stop if you'd like to discuss any issues after the forum.
Thank you. Andres Ramos?
Good evening, and thank you all for being here to participate in this forum. My name's Andres Ramos, and the reason I'm here before you today is because over two decades ago, my mom made a decision that many Elk Grove residents have made, and that was to bring her family to this community in search of good schools, in search of a safe community in which to raise a family. And so I'm the product of this community. I'm the beneficiary of a sense of community in Elk Grove, the safety and good schools that we cherish, that make Elk Grove special and unique. Now, the other thing that brought my mom to this community was that it was affordable for a single mother raising four kids to be able to not only be able to raise her family in this community, but also to enjoy the many civic amenities that we have. Whether it was our parks, whether it was art lessons with the CSD Recreation Services that we went to, whether it was sports. And so, that allowed me to thrive. Went through Elk Grove Elementary, Mark Offer, Kerr, Elk Grove High School, made it to CRC and then Sac State. My sisters and I are the first in our family to make it through college and earn four-year degrees. And my older sister and I are the first in our family to achieve graduate school. In District Two, in Hilltop Cemetery, my grandfather was late to rest. He spent his entire life illiterate in Puerto Rico. He never had the opportunities that this sort of community offers its people. And I, that really informs the values that drive me. That informs the values of why I'm running for City Council, because I want to ensure that future generations get the sort of Elk Grove that I got to benefit from. Because we're facing an affordability crisis statewide and within our community. We're facing a lot of growing pains in Elk Grove in terms of diversity and in terms of how we bring our community together. And those are some of the things that I'm advocating for, bringing my values to bear at City Hall. And so I look forward to the discussion tonight and hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Round of applause. Okay, we'll begin the questioning with you, Stephanie. For all candidates, how do you respond to the criticism that Elk Grove City Council is developer-driven?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. How long do they get to answer? We said one to two minutes.
Yeah, so at one and a half minutes, you put up the first...
No, that's two minutes.
Yeah. And the reason for the one to two minutes is because sometimes you can answer the question easily in one minute. Don't take two minutes, because we can always get to more questions. Yeah, but, you know, some questions require two minutes, right? It may take. So that's why we have that range. So, again, how do you respond to the criticism that Elk Grove City Council is developer-driven?
So, being the newest member on this council, I will say that I had no idea there was a criticism for developer-driven. I believe that the decisions that I've made and the decisions that I've made on the council was not because I was driven by a developer or I was in any way bought by a developer, is what I heard, right? It was more about the community and the city itself. I think I've received criticism all across the board, right? The council, that's kind of what we do, is that we make decisions and we're never gonna make anybody happy, right? There's always gonna be one side that is never gonna be happy. And we love to find a happy medium for both sides, but no matter what. It seems from my experience being two years on the council, so I'll give you a really good example, is Park Gate. There is now gonna be a senior living center that's there. They pulled in the community group to discuss what they were going to do, and that worked out really, really well. And I think if we do more of those, she's gonna put up the stop sign. So I think if we continue to do more of those, if we continue to do more of those, I believe that we can then meet both sides.
Thank you. I'm going to be repeating your names before you speak, just so the voters can get used to hearing these names, okay? Orlando Fuentes?
Now, I have heard the criticism that the City Council is driven by contributions from developers. That's really widely known in the community of people that I associate with. And you can see that influence, very much so as you see more and more housing projects going up. But the problem with all those housing projects is at the same time that they're going up, we need to be addressing the issues that that creates. Again, traffic congestion, and the question as to whether we're building low- and moderate-income housing, which again affects homelessness. Whether we're building the right kind of development. There might be other kinds of development, other than what we're building now, that might be more beneficial. More concentrated housing that might include low and moderate income, mixed perhaps with retail. Transit centers, improve public transportation, so that people who live in those clustered communities don't have to drive or get in their car to find the amenities that they're looking for, such as restaurants, or retail, or entertainment. So developers are gonna have their say on any city council. They're gonna want to build houses, but there's more to building a community than just building houses. And so I do take it to heart, the criticism about developers influencing city council decisions. Thank you.
Pat Hume?
Thank you. I'm gonna take a slightly different attack on this. I'm not driven by anything other than making the decisions that I think provide for the best city for the future generations of Elk Grove. And providing for the city that attracts families like Andres to want to live here. You talk about an affordability crisis with housing, and I don't mean affordability as in the regional housing needs assessment numbers for low and moderate income, but affordability of first-time homebuyers, of people wanting to start out. It's not that complicated. It is a supply and demand issue. And so it's easy to demonize developers because of the effects of what they do, traffic and other things that we can provide solutions for. But you cannot, I think it's a little bit disingenuous, to demone providing housing when that's the only thing that solves and makes housing more affordable for the average buyer. So I've got a background in land use, and I've employed that, going back to my days on the Planning Commission, to try and put into place policies that mitigate some of those impacts that Orlando mentioned with respect to infrastructure improvements and some land use policy changes. And as far as true affordable housing, again, back to the Rena numbers, Elk Grove, because we charge an affordable housing fee for every market-rate unit that gets produced, we have put more affordable housing in the ground than any other community in the Sacramento region. So I get that it's easy to demonize developers as a whole, but remember that in addition to providing the roof over your head, they provide the places where you shop, they provide the services within the city. And so we just need to make sure that we are planning for that growth and planning for that smart, orderly continuation that allows Elk Grove to continue to provide opportunities for people to live here.
Andres Ramos?
Well, certainly, we need to partner with developers in terms of how we grow our city, because of course it's not the city that itself builds and develops. You have to work with developers in partnership. It's a question of how the city works with developers and what sort of leverage points, what tools in the city's toolbox the city uses to ensure that we're getting the sort of infrastructure built that we need in order to sustain that sort of development, so that it's not a burden on public resources. To ensure that we're being inclusive in the way we build, and it's not all just single-family homes, but it includes other sort of, you know, higher-density units that might appeal more to folks of my age. So that's, I think, one part of the question, which is, you know, developers need to be at the table because they're a necessary component of the process. It's a question of are you gonna have a council member who's advocating for the interest of what's best for the community or saying, "Well, this is what the developer wants, so let's give it to them." Now, in terms of the influence of developers, sort of politically, we'll pull up the 460s. Look at campaign contributions. Unfortunately, the city of Elk Grove doesn't have any contribution limits. So candidates receive, right and left, five-thousand-dollar contributions from developers. Now, it could be a chicken-or-egg sort of issue. Well, I would have supported these sort of projects that are what the developers want regardless. They're just giving me money because I happen to agree with them on everything. Or it could be the reverse, who knows? But certainly take a look at the campaign finance reports. You know, I'm not funded by developers. I'm funded by supporters in this community and by the people. It's taken me probably fifty individuals to just raise the amount that one developer gives to one candidate. And I don't think that's right in a democracy. So I certainly support campaign finance reform to ensure that our elected officials are accountable to the people they serve in this community.
This question for Orlando Fuentes. What is your position on district elections? And do you think that it would improve representation of voters in Elk Grove?
I support by-district elections. In Elk Grove, we have four council districts. You must reside, whatever district you reside in is the district you're gonna be running for. But you are elected by the entire city at large, so it's kind of a hybrid model. We have districts, we have district councilmen, but we, each of us, would be elected at large. And I support by-district because it gives a chance for each district to select its own city councilperson. It identifies an individual who will be their representative on city council. If they have concerns about traffic or crime in their neighborhoods, they know that they have a city councilperson that they can go to. If there are five city councilpersons and no one's accountable to a particular district, it's easier just to ignore a concern, whether it's a phone call, personal contact, or email, to a councilperson. The other thing is, it's a Voting Rights Act issue. California passed the Voting Rights Act of 2001. And if it has been determined that there is a negative influence on a particular community, then the city must accommodate with the Voting Rights Act and move to a by-district election. That is what's happening across the state. That is happening community by community, as each of those communities moves from an at-large election to a by-district election. That is fair, that is democratic, and that gives the less fortunate, non-developer candidate gives them a better shot at running for office and having their voice heard in a campaign.
Pat Hume?
Thank you. So I want to provide a little bit of background first. The reason Elk Grove has a from-district system, where each council member has to live in their particular district, but they're voted upon by the whole city, is because that was an imposition of LAFCO at the time of our incorporation. And at the time, it was a kind of, as was mentioned, a hybrid system, and people questioned the logic behind it. I've come to actually appreciate it, and I'll tell you why. Would you prefer one representative, as Orlando mentioned, or would you prefer five representatives? Because in your current system, you get a vote for a majority of the council every two years. You get a vote for two councilmembers, even if they don't live in your district, and the mayor. Under a by-district system, you would only get to vote for the mayor every two years and your council district every four years. And so what happened when we were in the county is oftentimes there would be issues that would concern Elk Grove of the South County, and our representative, whether it was Don Nofoli or Toby Johnson or Henry Kloss beforehand, would be outvoted four to one on something that impacted our community. And so that could happen in Elk Grove, where yes, you have your district representative, but I feel like my district, District Two, is particularly vulnerable because we've tried to preserve the rural area out there, which provides a lot of larger lots that people look at salaciously and think, "Well, that might be a spot to put some higher-density housing." And if you only have the effect of that district representative and the mayor, then there's potential the other three could quote-unquote "gang up" because they would never be accountable to you. So I favor our system because I think it is more responsible to the voters and not to the candidates.
Andres Ramos?
Well, let's be clear that, looking at District Two, if voters in rural Sheldon were concerned that they would be sort of outvoted on the council about preserving their way of life, well, that's actually more possible under the current system because you might not even have a representative representing District Two who would be supportive of that because voters in Laguna West, voters in East Franklin, voters in Laguna Creek, they get to vote on who represents this seat. Which means theoretically, I could lose by district in District Two as a candidate of rural Sheldon, but voters in Laguna West and East Franklin, who want someone who isn't gonna preserve rural Sheldon, could choose who represents them. And I think that's undemocratic. I think it's better to be accountable and responsible to the people in the neighborhoods that you're representing on the City Council. In addition to many of the reasons that Mr. Fuentes indicated, which is that it also is highly favored by the California Voting Rights Act, by the Federal Voting Rights Act, because at-large elections have a history of typically discriminating against candidates of color and candidates who have less access to resources. Our by-district system, combined with the fact that we have no contribution limits, means that it's a very difficult task to run against an incumbent. Now, we're doing it, but it's a challenge because instead of being able to knock on every door in District Two and have an in-depth conversation on the issues with my neighbors, I've had to walk in Stone Lake this past weekend and in East Franklin, which is great, but it means that I have to be very selective about the voters that I can talk to, and it has to be a quick conversation. With by-district elections, not only are we being more democratic, we're allowing our neighborhoods to select the representatives in an in-depth, intelligent sort of way, which is why I support it and will move forward immediately if elected by moving our city to by-district elections.
Stephanie Nguyen?
Thank you, Paula. I'm for the process which we have right now, and I'll give you a really good example. And I've used this to many folks who not understand the difference between by-district and from-district and at-large. Right now, each one of us live in the district that we represent. The example I'm gonna give you is when I first got on this council, and there was an issue that came up regarding trailer homes, and that was in my district, and the approval of that. I watched as my colleagues each took a turn and answered the question, met with the individual, and helped me through it. Being a new member on the council, I didn't necessarily know exactly what I needed to do. Now, moving forward, in the last almost two years, I've also seen other council members jump in and assist in other districts where they weren't the council for that district. You look at any other city that is from-district, you don't, or by-district, you don't see that. Right now, you all live in the city of Elk Grove, but you all live in a certain district. Would you like it, right? Would you like if each one of us from the council voted on an issue in your district, but yet, when it came time to voting, you wouldn't be able to vote for us or vote us out? And that's the best example I've been able to give for people to understand the difference between by-district, from-district, and at-large.
Okay, next question, we begin with Pat Hume. What is your position on the termination of the city manager?
Okay. That's a heavy one. Obviously, I won't get into too much detail because it's personal. Obviously, I won't get into too much detail because it's a personal matter. I will say I did vote in favor of it. I don't believe that she had done anything wrong. I think she served the city diligently for 10 years, and during that period, particularly with the greatest recession we've seen in our lifetime, her skill set was exactly what was needed for that position to get us through those times with money left in reserves in the bank. However, I think that as you look to go to the next level and you look at what skill sets might be needed to get you there, you have to recognize whether or not the current person is, has those skill sets. And so I think the council felt like it was time, you know, the city manager, my grandfather did it for 20 years, but typically, five years is a good round. So we felt like it was just time for a new set of eyes, for a different skill set, and to try and elevate the city to the next level as we look to try and make it a place where you can live, work, shop, and play. So I have nothing ill to say of the former city manager. I don't know who the next city manager will be. I know what I'm looking for in that position. We were able to realize some savings with respect to the severance that had to be paid due to our contract because we have not backfilled that position yet. We're utilizing the services of our assistant city manager, who's doing a great job. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, you have to sort of take the temperature of the morale of the organization, and I've seen that morale is good and that a lot of the folks within the organization feel like it was a good move and it was time. So I voted to do it, I stand behind it, but again, I have no ill will towards the prior city manager.
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that because we don't want to get into anything personal. So thank you.
Well, frankly, I think the decision made by the city council was irresponsible, in my view. I would not have voted to fire the city manager without cause. At the end of the day, as Harry Truman said, the buck stops here. The council has a leadership role, and the city manager is an employee, an agent of the city council, which means if you don't like the job that's being done, it's a question of leadership and how you direct your employee to perform. As was stated, she did an excellent job. She weathered, led our city and weathered it through the recession, an award-winning city manager. Now, to cost the city $300,000 in a severance package, I mean, that's, I believe that's about the size of the community service grant that the city gives out every year. That could have gone to public safety, that could have gone to other sorts of investments, rather than taking that money out of the general fund to get rid of someone just for a fresh set of eyes. So I think that decision was not one that was well-made, I would not have made that decision. And really, at the end of the day, if a change is needed, the council needs to look in the mirror, because I think it's a question of the leadership of the council, knowing that you have the responsibility and that you take responsibility when you think that new direction is needed in terms of policy, in terms of leadership, not merely blaming staff for that.
Stephanie Nguyen.
Thank you, Paula. You know, without getting into it, because it is a personal question, and I appreciate the question, I understand why it was asked, and I also don't want to go too deep into it. I will say that being the newest member on the council, I did know Ms. Gill and the work that she did, and I felt like she did an excellent job during the 10 years that she was there. But during my two years that was there, and as our city continued to grow, I also saw that we needed somebody that would be able to come in and take us through those next couple of years, especially since we had so many projects that were going on right now. Now, if you take a look back, and as Councilmember Hume said, we went back and took a check again to see, did anything stop? Did the city fall apart? No, none of that happened, right? And so it was taking, you know, sometimes in a leadership position, you have to make tough decisions such as that. It was tough for me because she was a woman, and we have very, very few women in not only the city manager position, but just in executive-level positions. But to me, it's about getting the work done. And to me, it's about making sure that we position our city so that way, we can ensure that the city grows in a positive direction.
Orlando Fuentes.
When I heard that Laura Gill was being let go after 10 years of excellent service, I was concerned. It struck me as, you know, the basic question is, why are we doing this? Why is the city council doing this at a cost of $300,000? That's a huge check to write for someone at the end of their tenure as a city manager. I was also concerned that as, obviously, the highest-ranking woman in the city, that she was dismissed by the city council. I'm also concerned about the diversity in audit study that was done on city employment, which showed that essentially, the high-level managers' jobs are generally not, there aren't enough women, there aren't enough culturally diverse people in those positions. And so I think to let go of Laura Gill at a cost of $300,000 was less than desirable. I do believe that the city council needs to work closely with the city manager, that it's teamwork, it's a shared vision, and the city council has a responsibility to share that vision with the city manager and help them succeed. Thank you.
And this question, we begin with... The question is, as the grant line bypass is completed, will rural Elk Grove be preserved?
Well, looking at the sort of perspective that the city has had about rural Elk Grove and the rural Sheldon area, you know, that's been, I think, an understanding that the city has had that we're going to balance preserving our rural character, our rural heritage, with kind of the newer, more suburban, urban side, other side of the city. So I think, I don't see any problem with that. The challenge is, you know, with the JPA connector coming in, is that going to bring in, you know, a desire to expand development? I think that's a question that a lot of environmentalists are certainly asking around some of the unincorporated parts of the county between Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove. And, you know, that's up for the county to decide. What's within our control is whether the city decides to break that sort of understanding with our residents of rural Sheldon. You know, I'm not interested in doing that necessarily. I think we certainly have to look at how we intend to grow as a city going forward and whether we can meet the sort of needs in terms of housing within our current city limits. Certainly, we have the SOI, which is, I think, why some folks are looking beyond our limits. But any sort of conversation related to rural Sheldon needs to be had with that community because they have the sort of settled expectation that we're going to preserve that rural way of life. I respect that. I see no need to mess with that. I think we have other areas to focus in our city, particularly in the southeast policy area, as we work to fix our jobs to homes and balance.
Stephanie Nguyen.
Thank you, Paula. I spent a whole day with the community in rural Elk Grove and was able to understand the history behind the rural area and the city, and the fact that they wanted to educate me as a council member on the importance of keeping it rural. And as we grow grant line, and, you know, I'm not going to say that we're not going to preserve it, but I'm not going to say that we are. I will say that it's very important to me as well, too, because I appreciate how they've kept it that way and how they've battled with it here at this city as well, too. And what's worked for me is meeting with the community members out there and understanding them. I would like to also, as Mr. Andres said, keep it that way, because that's a part of the history of our city, right? That's an area in which it is, it's a part of the city in which you have a community that really loves the way that area is, and they moved there for a reason. And to go out there and change the reason why they moved it, or the reason why they're there, I don't think with the, I'm struggling with words. I am for keeping it rural. I am supportive of it after meeting with the community out there. That being said, though, I'm only one vote, right? There are other council members that are on there as well, too. And as the city continues to grow and as we have these conversations with the community, then we'll understand how we can develop that area together.
Orlando Fuentes.
This issue is the essence of public policy. This is how public policy is made. We have an issue, we have a need for better transportation, better drivability, connecting Highway 50 with 99, creating a shortcut bypassing the city of Sacramento, but at what cost? And who's at the table making these decisions? We need the stakeholders at the table, not just... It's good that we had a meeting, the city council had a meeting with the Sheldon area folks to talk about this, that's excellent, that's excellent governance, but that has to be an ongoing situation. You need to have ongoing input from the people in that area. If we continue to develop that southeast connector because we have traffic issues and things like that, we need, development is going to happen along that corridor. People are going to want gas stations, people are going to want convenience stores, and then there's might be other kind of retail development along there that serves the needs of people driving, getting from one place to the other. That's more than likely to happen, but how it's going to happen is yet to be determined. And it's about public policy decision-making. You need to have stakeholders at the table, you need to have everybody involved, and the city council needs to provide leadership for those communities.
Pat Hume.
Thank you. When I was growing up in Elk Grove, almost all of the city where most of our residents lived looked more like the rural area. And so it's near and dear to my heart because it reminds me of my childhood. Since my time on the Planet Commission, I was instrumental in establishing the boundaries of the rural area, in working on the rural roads policy that guides a different kind of development out there. And I'm also on the Capital Southeast Connector JPA, so I can tell you, I have been to many meetings with the community, with JPA staff, with city staff, and turned a lot of the people from adversaries into advocates. People talk about the grant line bypass. Originally, they did want it to bypass and go out south of the river and then come back and totally avoid the town of Sheldon. So we've worked hard to put design guidelines in place that have some segments that will be an expressway, more free-flowing traffic. Some segments will be more like a thoroughfare that will have some stoplights in a little more urbanized area. And then the Sheldon area, we have reserved as a completely unique design aesthetic with split-rail fencing, with off-corridor paths and trails, including horse paths, with no curb gutter and sidewalk as per the rural roads standards. So I mean, it's been a long, hard road to get to where we are, but we've moved it in a very positive direction with a lot of input from the community. And the other thing to remember is that regardless of what happens with the roadway, and including what happens with the roadway, the city of Elk Grove still controls the land use around it. And so as long as we have policies in place to preserve that rural aesthetic and keep people in place that want to preserve that rural aesthetic, the Sheldon area will stay much like it is for a long, long time to come.
Okay, Stephanie Nguyen. What would you do to solve the traffic problems in Elk Grove and how would you pay for it?
So, circle question. I would say that we do have a growing traffic problem here in our city of Elk Grove. As our city continues to grow, traffic is always going to be an issue. I will say that one of the areas which I've noticed, young people, and I talk about this all the time, young people, before, when I was 16, I was in line at DMV getting ready to get my license. Nowadays, we have young people who don't do that. They're utilizing Uber, they're utilizing Lyft. I think if we increase our public transportation, more and more young people will take public transportation. I think right now, a lot of the folks that live in Elk Grove, we don't work in Elk Grove right now, we work in Sacramento, or we work in Rancho Cordova, so we all drive there. But if our public transportation system was set in place for all of us to be able to use the public transportation system, I think that would help, one, with our traffic and our congestion in our city. As far as paying for, how we're going to pay for this, well, I mean, there's always the conversation about taxing, right? Taxing the city. I'm not saying that we are going to tax the city, right? But I will say that we have a $293 million budget. And we take a look at that budget, and we have between the general and the restricted funds, right? Each one of those pots of money pays for different pots of things. The city council only controls the general fund pot. When you look at your restricted fund pot, that covers the services that we provide here in the city. So I think together, as a community, as a council, I think working regionally with other collaboratives here in our region, I think everybody is struggling with that transportation issue now. But as long as we're playing regionally with other cities as well, too, when funding comes into place, we're going to be at that table, and we're going to be able to take a piece of that as well, too.
Orlando Fuentes.
Traffic is probably, in the eyes of many, the number-one problem in Elk Grove. I've heard of people moving out because Elk Grove was too congested, and that would, nobody would think, would have called Elk Grove congested back in 1991 when I moved to Elk Grove. But it is now, and I see it when I come home, coming south of 99 and getting off of Laguna Boulevard, and it's just horrendous, especially around rush hour from 3:00 in the afternoon on to about 6:00. But how do we solve this problem? It is all of us that need to work on this problem. City council and its development projects and building houses and building retail, that's an issue. But we also need federal and state participation. We need funds from SB1, the gas tax, to help us with certain projects here in Elk Grove that affect not just us, but the region of South Sacramento and downtown, and as we've talked about, the issues of congestion on I-5 and 99, morning, noon, and night. So it's a big issue to tackle. But what we should not be doing as a city is building housing tracks after housing tracks without regard to traffic and other issues that creates. We need to look for solutions that mitigate some of these problems.
Pat Hume.
Great, thank you. Well, the first solution is you take the places that people want to go and put them closer to where they are, right? And then you cut down on traffic that way. So I think Elk Grove needs to continue to be diligent and aggressive about correcting our jobs to housing imbalance, creating the places and opportunities for people to work right here in their own communities so they don't have to drive on 99 or I-5. We need to increase the amount of amenities and sort of the there-there places in Elk Grove so that people don't feel they have to drive to Sacramento for dining opportunities or entertainment opportunities or cultural events. And then, you know, we've probably put in, since my time with the city, I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood of half a billion dollars, so $500 million worth of infrastructure improvements. Redid two interchanges at Sheldon and the Grant Line, built the great separation over the railroad tracks at Grant Line, put in the pedestrian and bicycle-only overcrossing parallel to Elk Grove Boulevard, a couple of roundabouts out on the east side. We've increased lane miles, we've enhanced intersections. So we're trying to do the sort of nuts-and-bolts things to cut down, but there's only so much you can do. And so as was mentioned, you know, the changing face of how people get around, you know, it's less than a $10 Uber ride from one side of Elk Grove to the other. And so if we can create those places to go here in town and get people out of their cars, that, I think, is the best solution. I've also been working on the RT board to try and fast-track the blue line extension down to the city limits ahead of the green line extension out to the airport for light rail, because obviously, you have, one is a very large project and one is a smaller, maybe more bite-sized, manageable project that we could get in the ground sooner. I've also been working to build a multimodal station and bring heavy passenger rail in conjunction with light rail and transit so that people have other opportunities of mobility to get around the region. So the two things you got to do, you got to have the right things in the right places and you got to have the opportunities for them not to be in their cars in the first place.
Andres Ramos.
So addressing traffic definitely requires a multifaceted approach. As has been noted, one of them is, you know, building our economic base so that folks are commuting, everyone is commuting to Sacramento to work, but we have jobs here where folks are living, working, driving in Elk Grove. That's critical. Also, as we plan, ensuring that we're creating this sort of infrastructure to support, you know, more than just driving. We're a bedroom community where in order to get really anywhere, you have to get in your car and drive. And so let's, you know, have mixed utilization, let's have complete streets, let's encourage cycling, have trails, we'll support our trails that we have, and build more. Additionally, we do need SB1 to be sustained by the voters. It's up for a vote this November with Proposition 6. I encourage a no vote on Proposition 6. That's going to make it much harder to invest in our infrastructure. Even just down the street from here on I-5, a couple months ago, there was a puddle that caused, you know, 20 people's car tires to go flat. You know, our transportation infrastructure needs investment and support. If that fails, the city and regionally is probably going to have to engage in trying to do another regional sales tax like Measure B. That's the sort of challenge that we have with our infrastructure. So that's a really critical component. But, so certainly, we also have to invest in public transit. Now, obviously, we have E-Trans- Now, obviously, we have E-Trans, but you know, E-Trans only has like one little line that runs on the weekend. You're pretty much stuck unless you live near Elk Grove Boulevard or Laguna Boulevard during a lot, a lot of times of the day. And then we have to integrate well with RT and HR to get light rail to come to Elk Grove. You know, if I'm the, if I'm Elk Grove's representative to RT, I'm going to vote to reduce fares, I'm not going to vote against that. We need to encourage more ridership.
Stephanie. Oh, that's right, yes, okay. Orlando. The question is about youth engagement. I don't know the role the city council has in youth engagement, but if you do have any ideas for keeping youth engaged in the city council, this vote says, but in general, youth engagement.
You know, if we want to have healthy families, we want, we need to have activities for our youth. And the CSD board that I sit on holds, hosts many activities for teens at a teen center, and we have teen dances, we have father-daughter dances and so forth, to give young folk in this town activities to engage in. The city of Elk Grove also has a youth commission, which we need to be very attentive to the concerns that they bring to the city council and the ideas that they have. Overall, youth engagement is part of what we need to do to have healthy families in this town, to keep students out of trouble, to keep them engaged, to develop new school skills, practical skills, and to, to develop their social skills so that they can go on and while they're good, trying to be good students, also trying to be well-rounded individuals. We need to have sports, and, and again, my board, the CSD board, is very much engaged in sports in this town. We, we are a soccer Mecca, and all our soccer fields during soccer season, which really runs year-round, are filled with young athletes playing soccer. And so all of those kinds of activities are really important to, to help youth become highly-functioning adults, highly-educated adults, and to guide them in the, on the right path. Thank you.
Pat Hume.
Thank you. Again, I think the first thing you do is you, you give them some there-there, right? Places to go, things to do. Idle hands are the devil's playground, you know? And so I think we are trying to do a couple of the things that have been mentioned in sofar as building a multi-sport complex. That's a high priority of the council. We've got the aquatic center and community center under construction, but we need more places to go and more things for them to do. As far as the overlap with city government and youth engagement, we have a program used to be called Summer at City Hall, now it's called Civic Summer. And it offers internships to young people to come in and basically shadow the different public agencies within our community, and so that they can learn what goes on in those roles and if they'd like to pursue those careers. I think the other thing that we, we ought to be doing is we have some excellent academies at our different high schools, and these kids are talented, and they are learning skills that will pay them dividends throughout their lives. As a community, as a city, as organizations and businesses, we should be utilizing and tapping into that great resource in order to provide them with more projects to put their skills for. So I think there's a lot of things that we can and should be doing, but for me, the biggest thing is, is we've got to make sure that our families, units stay strong and that they feel safe, and that the, the schools are good, and that we do our best to provide more opportunities for them to fill their time.
Andres Ramos.
Well, I certainly agree that, you know, we need to engage youth by having activities for them to engage in. And certainly, as a city, you know, I think the options that we have are a little more limited than the school district and the CSD, which is why we want to, you know, have a strong relationship with the school district and the CSD in terms of how we can partner on any of those sorts of activities. You know, one thing that I've thought about, and I've talked to Orlando on the CSD, is, you know, why don't we try to work with the CSD and school district when it comes to recognizing the Sacramento region's farm-to-fork sort of identity, and also taking advantage of Elk Grove's kind of rural character? And, you know, I've worked in the school district. A lot of schools now are having little community gardens where they're teaching kids kind of, you know, a little bit of agriculture, a little bit about nutrition, you know? And you can go out on a field trip to a, you know, a farm and learn about what farm-to-fork really means, and how to, you know, feed and live a healthier lifestyle. And so I think those are ideas that I would like to bring to the table in terms of how we can partner with the school district, with the CSD in terms of engaging youth. You know, I agree, you know, one of the issues is, you know, if you're a kid and you don't have much to do, well, you know, idle hands, right? I was lucky to be engaged with the Elk Grove High School mock-trial team, an award-winning mock-trial team, year after year. You know, that kept me busy, that really engaged me, and we went to City Hall, I think it was, I want to say Susan Cochran, at the time, who was the city attorney, and she spoke to us about, you know, what it meant to be an attorney. And that, that really, you know, planted a seed in me in terms of wanting to engage myself in the law, and I could see myself doing it. So that was, that was really cool as a, you know, as a high schooler. So I think there are a lot of opportunities out there. Let's be proactive in building partnerships with our other local agencies to engage youth in that way, and, you know, keep them off the streets and on a path towards a career and success.
Stephanie Nguyen.
Thank you, Paula. Funny you ask about youth because our vice mayor is in the back here, and I know that last, this last year, he and myself worked with young people to put them back to work. So the federal guidelines consider a youth, any woman that is 24 and younger, can you believe that? 24 and younger are essentially a youth. And guess what, folks? What are young people into these days? You all have it too. This, right? Their phones, their texting, they're on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, and whatnot. And at-risk youth is a youth that has nothing to do. And if you ask any youth this day that is 16 years of age or older, you ask them what they want, they want money, right? They want money and they want a job, which is the reasoning why Vice Mayor Sun and I worked really hard this last year to find funds and place young people here from our city into a summer youth work internship. They worked at a real job, filled out real-time sheets and got paid a real check, had to file real taxes at the end of this year. And I think in order to engage youth, especially young people that are in working age, we got to get them ready for the working world, which means giving them workforce skills. Workforce skills can start pretty much at any age, but it's not taught in schools, and it's definitely not taught at home. So if we can take on that and grab the young folks that we have here in our city and work with the school district, because we have the biggest school district here, and put them all to work, not only are we setting up our city for success, but we're setting up the young people from our city here to be successful.
Okay. Pat Hume. Or Orlando did.
Okay, sorry.
Usually it's me that... You know, we have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to ask you to speed this up a little bit. So Claudia, give them the 30-second sign-up, one minute, okay? Instead of a minute now, I know they can do it. This is probably not the best question to do that on, but...
Yeah, well, gosh, that's a, that's a lot of budgets to look at, and goes back before I was on the council and would have actually been privy to those decisions. But I can tell you this, I think 2000-
You could say, you could just answer the part about, you know, what do you think reserves should be spent on?
Well, I'll tell you, I think what they should be spent on, and what a good chunk of that money went towards, was guiding us through the greatest recession of our lifetimes. And so that's really, if you're going to put away a rainy day fund, you got to spend it when it's raining, right? And so it backfilled some of those essential services and allowed us not to cut a lot of the things that our residents relied upon when the other sources of funding were not there. And so that's the number-one thing. We have a council policy that requires a certain percentage of the general fund amount, the general fund that Councilmember Nguyen mentioned earlier, that we have at least, I believe it's 22% in reserves. We still have more than that, and so we're still above our policy. I, I can't even verify the $54 million number, so I don't know that that's a real number to begin with, but I will say that reserves are there to spend when times are lean, and also at certain times you can make loans to other funds, and then they can be paid back in the meat hole.
Andres Ramos.
So certainly, I agree that budget reserves are meant to be spent when you're trying to weather through a recession or other tough economic times, and, you know, and so I actually kind of like the approach that the state has recently enacted with Proposition 2 a few years ago, that the governor put on the ballot and was adopted by the voters, not only trying to put more money aside in terms of a reserve, but also trying to take some of the swings in revenue up and down to kind of thin that out. Because if you get a lot of revenue in one year, well, then you should put more in the reserves, because if you think, you know, thinking, looking short-term, you may think, wow, look, we got all this money, so let's spend it, let's make long-term obligations. No, you do, you have to keep in mind, you know, the next recession may be right around the corner. And so we have to be, we have to think sustainably in terms of our fiscal, our fiscal planning. And so that's why I think you, you know, as tempting as it may be to dip into the reserve, you really have to think about that kind of evening out some of the ups and downs of the business cycle, economic cycle.
Stephanie Nguyen.
Thank you, Paula. So, you know, as I said earlier, we have a $293 million budget, and that we have a general fund and a restricted fund. Our general fund funds the police department, economic development, special projects, and some staff. It becomes a need versus a wants. And I would look at reserves, and the way I run my organization as well, I have a reserve as well. And there's a lot of things that a nonprofit organization wants, right? But there are a lot of things that are also needed. And the only time I think that we should dip into our reserve is when it is needed, right? And then we can work on the things that we want after that.
Orlando Fuentes.
Reserves. So my experience on the CSD board has informed me to a great extent as to my opinion about reserves and how they should be utilized. One, you have to have reserves, and the idea is not, not to spend the reserves. You want to have a healthy reserve so that you can, you may have to spend it when you're weathering economic crises or storms, economic storms, economic recessions, as we saw in 2008 and beyond. So in 2008, CSD saw its revenues falling steadily, 2009, 2010, 2011, and then we kind of hit rock bottom and started coming out of that recession. We did have to spend money from the reserves, we did have to cut back on services, we did have stations that experienced brownouts. It's not, not a complete blackout, but a brownout where services at those stations were diminished. The other, the other use of reserves is to make loans internally to, within your own agency, so that you can beat the market and get, essentially pay yourself back at a lower rate of interest, and utilize the money that's sitting there. And why borrow from the banks when you can borrow from your own agency? Thank you.
Andre Ramos. How do you bring more technology companies or established technology companies in Elk Grove?
Well, I'm supportive of the city's startup incentive program that I believe the council recently adopted. I think that's, that's a good approach. You know, really, whether it's any sort of business, you have to first recognize the limitations that the city has in terms of attracting business and helping entrepreneurs start business. It's not the city that creates those jobs, it's using your tools like incentives, cutting sort of, you know, regulations or fees, and other sort of help that the city can give. And so I think it's about 800,000 incentive program for startups in Elk Grove. I think it's, I think we need to see how that turns out to decide whether or not that's something worth keeping. But I think this is, this is a place where, where we're fertile ground for that to happen, given the connection that we have to the Bay with a lot of Bay transplants coming to Elk Grove, that we're facing our affordability crisis, the Bay Area is much worse. And so I think we're, we're in a good opportunity to attract some of that innovation, and so I support that program and want to see whether it's successful.
Stephanie Nguyen.
Thank you, Paula. So it's more than just bringing and giving incentives for businesses to grow here, and definitely the technology business, but it's also making sure that the talent is here in our city. No technology company will come here if their talent isn't here. So again, it's about a workforce development. I continue to put this in your minds because unless we have a workforce that is skilled to take on such work, right? In order, unless we have people here that have such talent, technology companies will not want to come here to our city.
Orlando Fuentes.
Well, we do want to attract business, we do want to bring in the right kind of business, and we do want to bring in clean manufacturing if, if we can, we do want to bring in high-paying jobs, and I do think that the workforce here, while you always have to do workforce development, you have to do, those in the labor force who are not working need to develop the skills they need to meet the, meet the job requirements of the new, new jobs in this 21st century. So we need to attract those jobs while we also do workforce development, and we want to build our, our community around those businesses.
Pat Hume.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what's already been said. You know, the city council instituted the southeast policy area, which is a specific plan in the southern part of town, that when adopted, it was the most aggressive jobs-to-housing designated specific plan that I've seen adopted in the region. And that's important for a couple of reasons. One, because that provides the inventory to attract the businesses, too. Secondly, with, the council voted to fast-track or front-load some of the infrastructure required to serve those parcels so that it's quote-unquote shovel-ready, right? We've all, always all heard that term. Because you have to make it so that it's low-hanging fruit for the businesses to look, to locate. But here's the thing, in addition to the incentives and the economic development imperatives that we have, not only for tech startups, but also for businesses in general, and as far as for having for the talented workforce, the other thing that we have to do is convince those companies that are now down in the South Bay and areas around there that are experiencing a horrible affordability crisis and other things that are, that really it's, it's turning into almost a hostile situation for them down there, is we need to convince them to stop short of going over the hill to Nevada or onto Texas, and let them know that they can come to Elk Grove, that for the same bottom line, they can provide their employees a higher quality of life, and if the, the, the management wants to maintain their headquarters down because that's the lifestyle they enjoy, they can get to and from their satellite offices within the same day. And so I think that's why extending camera up to I-5 is a critical infrastructure piece, and making sure that CFD gets developed for that reason.
Claudia, could we go to one minute? Stephanie Nguyen. How will you get the full open space of the former lent-rent property occupied?
Well, I think that is one which we would have to, you know, bobble into somebody that I've grown to really work with, and I think it's more of, again, working with the community, but also having to work with developers. It's more than something I could say in one minute. I, I think, again, I don't, I will say I don't know it well enough to be able to say where it's at right now, but I will say that it's definitely a community-driven process, involving the community, involving the developers, and finding out as a city as a whole where we need to be and where we want to be and how we're going to get there.
Unfortunately, I'm not that familiar with the lent-rent issues, but again, I'll go back to how you make public policy, and that is you bring the stakeholders to the table, you bring your strategies and your opinions, and you bring your experts together to take a look at what is the best way to proceed. Thank you.
You had to pick this question for it to go down to one minute, huh? I mean, talk about a wealth of history along with this. Look, I'm going to say this, it's a private project privately funded, and it responds to private market demands. I wouldn't enter the brick-and-mortar retail world for all the tea in China right now. I think it's a changing face with Amazon and with everything else. But I will say this, that the developer has pretty well shown their hand, and that the council voted, they have a, a development agreement that's going to be expiring in November, which if it expires, they're going to leave about $15 million worth of sales tax reimbursement on the table. We, we put to them a couple of conditions in which we might be amenable to extend that development agreement, and they said, thanks, but no thanks. So they are, they are so flush, I guess, or their basis is so low, that they can wait until market demand is there, or that the changing face of retail or entertainment moves forward, or maybe the casino resort complex will act as an impetus. But the reality is, we're, we're at their, their timing.
Good job. Andres Ramos.
Yeah, the mall has been, frankly, an embarrassment for our city. You know, we've heard year after year that it's, it's going to come in next year, it's going to come in this, this upcoming fall, and yet, there it is, empty, driving down 99, it's like, wow, this is like a ghost town. So, you know, unfortunately, we are in a tough situation. It is a private, you know, private owner, private land, but we have a development agreement, and as, as was noted, it's up for renewal this, I believe, this November. And so as with anything, the city, the city council has to take the approach of what leverage points do we have at our disposal, and say, and say enough is enough. You've been, you know, taking us for fools as a city, and we look, I mean, we look terrible. This is embarrassing. This is embarrassing the region. I mean, every time I talk to folks outside of Elk Grove, one of the first issues they ask about is about the mall, and so when's that getting built, huh? Well, who knows? So I think we have to, we also can't let ourselves be taken by developers when it comes to sitting on land, not doing anything with it, or at least telling us that they're gonna do something with it, and then wait until the price goes up. And then I think the land that they then sold for the casino, I believe, was around the price that they bought the land for. So that's a problem.
Thank you. This one, we begin with Orlando Fuentes. What are your plans or what, how could the city council work with the Elk Grove Unified School District and local colleges to increase educational opportunities locally here in Elk Grove?
Well, I think, this is the twenty-first century. Again, whether it's high schools or colleges, like the Soonness River College, we have developing jobs and we, and we don't have the people with the skills and education necessary to fill those jobs. Today's market is, as, while it's still ideally about colleges and universities and graduate degrees, it's also about certification programs, and that's part of workforce development. Not everybody needs to go to college. I've talked to some of the trades as we, as we've talked about the political, these political campaigns, and they wanna see internship programs and apprenticeship programs where people can get the skills without necessarily having to go to college. This will serve our economy as well as serve the interests of those individuals who do get certifications or journeyman level in a trade where they can make a living.
Pat Hume?
Yeah, thank you. In addition to what I mentioned previously as far as tapping into the resources that we already have and utilizing those skills and talents, I agree that I, I think that we need to recognize that not every student in school is headed for a two- or four-year degree, and that there are great, well-paying jobs out there that have a totally different skill set than something you learn from a book. And we need to, to, to recognize that and get some of that vocational training back into our schools, so that people realize that there's a very good career with a lot of jobs where people are retiring out of them and they're not being backfilled, so the opportunity is ripe. So that's what I would lean toward.
Andres Ramos?
Yeah, certainly, we need to partner with the school district and as has been noted, recognize that, you know, we need to make sure that students are, you know, either college, career, and, well, everyone, life-threatening. And one of the things that I think the city can do is sort of what's happening at City Hall right now with the Community Workforce Training Agreement, sort of negotiations that are going on right now. I think that's one opportunity that the city could, has for, for workforce development and getting kind of that, that pipeline into, getting folks into a high-paying job. And so certainly, working with the school district to get students who are interested in a career rather than going through the college route into internships and along that path is something that the city can do, since the city has a strong relationship with the trades.
Stephanie Nguyen?
So I think, the question is, how do we, it sounds like, yeah, how can, how can the council work with the school district to provide more educational opportunities for locally? Okay, so I, I think we already have two-by-twos with the school district, but I think furthermore, I tie back around workforce development, right? If the city and the school district can work together around a certain type of a program where we can take our young people and prepare them to be successful in the workforce, I think that is key. I think if we work with the school district and maybe having a period, whether it's an extra zero period or a six period, and making sure that these workforce development skills are taught in school, and then after that, as they graduate, give them the different opportunities, whether it is going to college, whether it's going to a trade school, whether it's going to vocational school, but also showing them that all of these can be a successful pathway to their future. We don't do that now, I don't think anybody does that right now, but I think there's an opportunity for us to start to engage in that conversation and just to start to prepare for our young people to be successful.
This question is, gives you an opportunity, this is basically the last question before closing remarks, and it's an opportunity to brag about yourself, okay? Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna talk about closing remarks?
Yeah, you might have already done that, but repeat it, you know? Repeat, repeat. Because these questions, the voters wanna know about you, like, what do you bring to the table as a council member that will make Elk Grove better? What have you done specifically for Elk Grove? What are your qualifications? So here's a chance just to, in, you know, one minute, say everything you wanna say about what you bring to the city, and then we'll have closing remarks, and if you have more to say, you can say it then. So we begin now with Pat Hume.
I'd always prefer we just did the closing remarks to two minutes, that might be easier from a stream of consciousness standpoint. But, look, I'll say that I have a lot of experience, I have a practical life experience...
You know what, that's a fine idea. Would, or do you all agree that's a good idea, or would you prefer to have a specific one-minute closing remark?
I'd prefer to do two altogether.
How about you?
Sure.
Orlando? Okay, we'll begin, this is the two-minute closing remark.
So now you're really gonna like me, 'cause I'm not even gonna take my full two minutes. As I said before, I grew up in Elk Grove, I'm the third generation of my family to serve the Elk Grove community. I enjoy this work, I think I'm well-qualified, I think I'm experienced, I bring a lot of practical knowledge to the table, I've got a lot of regional connections that I've spent a long time cultivating and building rapport, and I have a lot of colleagues on the other boards that I serve upon that really wanna see me continue, and I wanna ask that you wanna see me continue, and I ask for your vote. As I said, stop me after this forum if there's anything you'd like to discuss. My phone number is on my literature in the room just behind that wall, my website is myname@pathume.com. Please call me, get me attached through the website, whatever, I'd love to talk with you, and I just ask again to allow me to do four more years of service to the community and up. Thank you.
Andres Ramos?
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming out here tonight and sitting through a city council candidate forum. It's been a pleasure being on stage with all these other candidates. You know, my service to the city really began in earnest in two thousand eleven when I was appointed as one of the first members of the city's multicultural committee, and I served on the committee for several years, helping organize the city's first, second and third multicultural festivals. And it was wonderful to attend the seventh annual festival this year and see that it's going strong. And actually, that's how Orlando and I really got to know each other very well on that committee and do a lot of fine work. And really, you know, my, my interest in running for council is, is to make sure that we're building an inclusive city for everyone, that as we move forward as a city and tackling a lot of the growing pains that we're experiencing, that we're making sure that we're lifting all our residents up. Certainly, we've seen some, you know, racial incidents that have happened in our community, and through my time on the multicultural committee, I was there working to be proactive on those issues, not just celebrating our diversity, but we, you know, we were having some really intense conversations back then. Unfortunately, the committee decided that it didn't wanna be the venue for, for that sort of thing. But now at this time, as our city is discussing these issues, I feel that I have the experience, particularly through my life experience, not only as someone who has grown up in Elk Grove, seen where it has been and where it's going, but also through the vantage point of a person of color who is committed to addressing these issues of diversity that our city has confronted over the past year. And certainly as someone who grew up in this community, is a beneficiary of safe neighborhoods, of affordable housing, I'm committed to ensuring that we're building an inclusive community economically for everyone in Elk Grove. And so I'm up here because I love Elk Grove and wanna do the best I can within my power to lift us all up. So I certainly will stay around afterward and happy to chat with anyone and certainly hope to earn your vote on November sixth. Thank you.
Stephanie Nguyen?
Thank you, Paula. So we heard a lot about traffic, we heard a lot about workforce development, jobs, and I will tell you that I am the only council member currently right now that is, that eats workforce development for breakfast, right? I go to work every day and that is all I think about. I go to sleep every day and that is all I think about. And that, everything that I do is around workforce development. You may not all think that workforce development is important, but it's important all across the board, whether or not you speak the English language, whether or not you know what it's like to interview, how to interview. These are real situations that folks struggle with every day. And to be able to stop the homelessness, to be able to make sure that we have folks that are gonna be successful and be contributors to our city and in our region, we need to make sure that everybody has a work skill that is going to be able to help them get into a job, right? Not just any job, but a well-paying job. I'm the only council right now that has young children. I've got a three-year-old and an eight-year-old, so I know what it's like to be a mother, a wife, run an organization, and also now work with the community. The organization that I run solely works directly with the community. It's my job every day to make sure that that budget is balanced, which is what we do also on the city. I have been able to, since I've taken over that organization, have a reserve that is over twenty-five percent of our budget, and that is unheard of for a nonprofit organization. And I tell you that, I tell you that because that speaks of the testaments of not only folks that have endorsed me and contributed to my campaign, but also the fact that I've been endorsed and supported by the entire city council here in Elk Grove, in Sacramento, and also in other partner cities like Rancho Cordova and Folsom as well, too. So I ask for your vote on November sixth, and I'm also available afterwards to answer any questions.
Orlando Fuentes?
So I'm gonna pull back a little bit, not talk about specifics such as workforce development, but I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the depth and breadth of my education experience and training. I first took my public policy class in graduate school, where we were, had some interesting discussions about how is public policy made, and what do you have pros and cons on each, either side of the issues? Do we build this hospital here? Where do we build the fire department? You know, what about the school and the church? So in very simplistic ways, we dialogue about public policy. I went to, after doing work in the community at the county level, I then went on to the state to tackle some statewide problems, child abuse and child abuse prevention, the lack of access to prenatal care and public health, suicide prevention in the Department of Mental Health, even crime prevention in the Attorney General's Office, all of these public policy issues, where we debated the issues and saw our, what we, what our mission was, and went forth and developed and implemented plans to not just make policy, but then to implement it. Subsequently, in my years since leaving state government, I've been involved with, as a founding chairperson of the multicultural, with the multicultural and the festival that it's put on. Yes, we've had interesting discussions, and yes, I think the city has approached the multicultural about being that avenue for bringing forth concerns and grievances on racial incidents and those kinds of things going on. I've also worked in restorative justice in the public schools to help bring, do mediation with students where there's conflict and try and educate not just the students, but the teachers and the administration and the school district as well, about the work we were trying to do to intercept that schools-to-prison pipeline. Public policy is what I'm all about, and as a parent and grandparent, I bring that personal family life experience. I have three granddaughters.
Yes, well-deserved, round of applause. Again, I really thank you all for participating tonight in the, in the forum. I think we learned a lot tonight, and the voters learned a lot, and I hope that they will pass on the information they learned tonight to their friends and family and encourage people to vote, of course. And I also wanna mention again, thank you for running for office, because it's not an easy thing to do, and it's a, it's a wonderful civic activity, and so the League of Women Voters really does appreciate that, that effort that you're making. And if you'll just sit for a moment, just a few more minutes, folks, I just want to announce the changes in Sacramento, and because I'm counting on you as real interested, active voters, 'cause that's why you're here, right? That you will pass on this information, because Sacramento is a city that, I mean, Sacramento County is a county that is participating in the Voters' Choice Act, which means that every voter in our county gets a ballot in the mail, and not everyone's used to that. So what happens when you get that ballot in the mail is you need to fill it out, sign the envelope, very important. They did report that they got several, many back without signatures, so that's really important. That's how they validate you're, you're a registered voter and that you have not voted more than once. And then what you do with that ballot is three things. You can put it in the mail with two stamps, you can use a drop box, which is, most every county library is a drop box, and the other locations will be listed in your voter pamphlet, or you can vote in-person at a vote center and get the little "I voted" sticker. At vote centers, they're completely full-service, you can register the vote there, you can change your voter registration there, you can drop off your ballot, you can use accessible equipment, you can get language assistance in many different languages. So vote centers, I'm just going to tell you where yours is, because there was a change. Last time it was at Eden, um, what was it? The Eden Gardens Event Center. That, that vote center will not be, on Bradshaw, will not be open this time. It's going to be at the Pat O'Brien Community Center instead of the Eden Center. So I just wanted to make that announcement, and you probably know this, election day is November sixth, but you will have eleven days to vote before November sixth at a vote center or drop your ballot off. So vote as early as you can, it helps the elections department. So thanks for attending, and thank you to the sponsors, TOFA, and all these sponsoring organizations, and the League of Women Voters volunteer...